The Asian Pacific Islander American Public Affairs Association presents City Council Candidate Forum 2011, featuring the six candidates running for Cupertino City Council. And now for tonight's moderator, Xin Kong.
Welcome to the third Cupertino City Council Candidate Forum. Please stand up. Let's pledge to the flag. I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, please sit. This forum is sponsored by the Apapa, is Asian Pacific Islander American Public Affairs Association. Before we start this very serious forum, let's view a very entertaining short film. Please roll the film.
For your own rights and health, vote for a good candidate.
Okay. Let me introduce Dong Sen, the executive director of Apapa Bay Area Chapter.
Good evening, and welcome to the Cupertino City Council Candidate Forum hosted by Apapa. The Asian Pacific Islander Public Affairs Association is a nonpartisan, not-for-profit organization whose mission is to empower Asian-American community through education civic in participation. Apapa has hosted civic forums and conducted voter registration drives for the past 10 years around the entire California state. This past week, the founder of the Apapa, C.C. Nguyen, just received an award from President Obama last week. This award is an inspiration to all Asian-Americans to continue our community involvement. Apapa Bay Area Chapter hosts a series of candidate forums around the Bay Area, including San Francisco, that's last week, Fremont, Hayward, Union City, and Oakland. Tonight is the first time Apapa conducts a town hall meeting in Cupertino, a city with an Asian-American population over 60%. Our goal is to contribute to the community here through voter education and bring the best candidates to serve our community. It's not only our obligation to elect the best person to govern us, but also it's our responsibility to participate either by voicing our concern or by spending time volunteer to the community. Without further ado, I invite Mr. Xin Kong, the president-elect of Cupertino Rotary Club, to moderate the forum. Thank you.
My name is Xin Kong, a member of Apapa, also a member of Cupertino Rotary. Today, I'm so glad to serve as a moderator. Let me outline today's procedure. This forum includes three parts. The first part is the opening statement. Each candidate has two minutes opening statement. The order is determined by drawing poker. Second part is the question and answer. I will start to ask a question, and each candidate will take turn to first answer the question, then they'll follow the same order. Each candidate has one and a half minutes to answer the question. We also will open the question to the audience, and please write your question on the card. I think the Apapa staff will distribute the card and collect the cards. The final part is closing statement. Each candidate has one and a half minutes. We will take a reverse order of opening statement for the candidate to do the closing statement. During the debate, please keep quiet and carefully listen to all candidates. Let's give the candidate a good forum. Before this tense debate just about to begin, let's give all candidates a round of applause. We need to thank them, their dedication and willingness to serve our community. Okay, let's start our opening statement with the draw. I think Chris will be starting the opening statement.
Thank you, Xin, and good evening. Happy Diwali. I have been known as a poker pro, so naturally I drew the ace, and so I'm the first to go. My name is Chris Zhang. I'm number five on the ballot this year. And I'm running because I think that our city government, we can do a lot of things a lot better, and the city government is not doing it. And we need someone who is open to new ideas and be receptive to the people's voice. There are a few things that are on my priority. One is education. We have great kids in Cupertino. We have great schools. But how do we make sure that our schools are not jeopardized? And how do we make sure that our kids can go to the top universities in the country without prejudice? That's something I need to work, we need to work on. And public safety. We need to make sure that our Cupertino remains a safe place, free from bank robberies, vehicle break-ins, or minor crimes such as assault and robbery. We need to reduce traffic congestion, especially around the tri-school area. I have a good plan for doing that. We need to keep our city's budget balanced, and it's not very hard. We will not spend more than what we take in, and we need to be careful with any big projects at the planning process so that it doesn't end up costing the taxpayers a lot of money. And finally, we need to keep our government open and listen to the people's voice. We need to, I will change the format of our city council meetings so that the people will have more voice at the city council meetings without prolonging the city council meetings that are already pretty long. And with open government, we also need to make it easy for people to apply for permits and do business with the city. I am a patent lawyer and a small business owner. I trained with the U.S. Marine Corps Officer Selection Program and also worked in the federal government in D.C. I currently volunteer with CERT, the Community Emergency Response Team, and my wife is an occupational therapist. Together, we can make Cupertino a better place, so please consider voting for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Gilbert, your turn.
Good evening. My name is Gilbert Wong, and I'm the mayor for the city of Cupertino. I'm very humble and proud to be here tonight for Apapa to host this. I was born, raised, and educated here in Silicon Valley. I'm a son of an immigrant, and I'm very proud to be an American, and I love my community here in Cupertino. My wife Helen and I are raising both of our children here in Cupertino, and I humbly ask for you to be re-elected again. Some of the things that I would advocate for is, number one, when I talk to residents as I walk around precincts, is, number one, keep our library open seven days a week. And the city council has increased our library hours. Second, we want to keep a strong fiscal solvent government, and we need to keep Apple here. Apple made a large announcement by Mr. Jobs coming to this council chamber to say that he will be expanding here in Cupertino. Apple's our number-one sales-producing, and we want to assist Apple to stay here in Cupertino. Also, we have a retail, and we need to balance corporate people with the retail. And Vaclav Mall is something that I want to work together with the landowners to create a better atmosphere over there. And also, we're bringing a super-safe way into Cupertino at Homestead Square, which was recently approved by the commission. Also, we're having more economic development at the Cupertino Crossroads. We're bringing in islands, and also we're bringing in a TJ Maxx and a home store. So we need to balance as well, too. Furthermore, we need to have more open space and public park, and also, we need to keep Cupertino a very safe community. I'm very proud to be here, and thank you for hosting the forum.
Thank you. Homer.
Thank you, Xin, and thank you for Apapa to be hosting this forum as well. I have lived in Cupertino for 25 years, and in this Silicon Valley actually for 40. And having been elected for five terms on the school board, I've gone through a lot of the so-called, what should I call it, institutional-type of changes, whether it's conducting meetings, for example, meetings that pass midnight is certainly not a public meeting. And so there are areas for improvement, and we try to get to the point, talking about how we can improve, let's say, the city council of doing things. We can have more study sessions and kind of be more prepared before we have these meetings. Sometimes the drag got out too long. But more importantly at this point is that the problems so-called we face because of economic downturn. We are concerned about, you know, our retail tax base. And so actually, one of my suggestions would be for all the activities that is being conducted or being improved to improve business. One of the main points, again, we have to go back to so-called shopping in Cupertino. But I think the idea of making our city more vibrant is that all of us have to pitch in in many ways, and I'll cover that a little bit more later. Business, I'd like to see more green technology involved. And lastly, I certainly want the residents' input. I want City Hall to be working with and for our residents and not against them in any way. Thank you.
Thank you. Marty.
Thank you, Xin. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. My name is Marty Miller, and I've been on the Planning Commission for the last eight years, working hard to make Cupertino a better place. I've lived in Cupertino for 31 years. My two children went through the Cupertino school system, and I've volunteered my time as school site council member, soccer coach, rotarian, and currently Planning Commissioner. I have two engineering degrees and an MBA from Stanford, and I've worked for HP right here in Cupertino for 10 years. I've been a strong proponent of our multicultural community, and I've helped new residents to our community feel welcome and avail themselves of the services that Cupertino offers. I've helped Chinese candidates for elected office, including the current mayor Gilbert Wong and Campbell Council member Evan Lo get elected. I've also helped Chinese candidates for appointed positions like Dr. Winnie Lee, the current chair of the Planning Commission, and former Planning Commissioner Carrie Chen. My priorities are to ensure the health and safety of our residents, to protect our schools and improve our schools. Our schools are the number-one reason that we, many of us, have come to Cupertino, and we need to make sure that they stay strong and we enhance them. And I believe we can do that in a partnership between the council and the schools. I want to reduce traffic at school sites and in our neighborhoods, and I want to repair our roads and sidewalks, revitalize our retail, and finally, make Apple's campus a reality. On the Planning Commission, I've advocated for open government, made listening to residents a priority, and work cooperatively with my fellow commissioners. As a council member, I will work hard for you, study the issues, listen to residents, and bring honesty, integrity, and logic to the council. Please vote for me on November 8th. I would be humbly proud to get your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Donna, your turn.
Hi. My name is Donna Austin, and I am a retired teacher, a former Planning Commissioner, and I'm the only woman on this ballot, and therefore, it's really easy to remember me. I have received the Star Award of the Year 2011, citizenship for my community service, and it's a lot. I've had experience with land use through the Planning Commission, and it will be important when the new Apple campus comes in and when the downtown Main Street is formed. I have been honored by receiving the city's Crest Award for my service to Cupertino, too. I'm on the boards of the Cupertino Historical Society and the Quota Cupertino, our Library Foundation, the League of Women Voters, Stockwell Meyer Task Force, and I'm active in my church, St. Joseph's, Cupertino. My husband and I raised two grown daughters in Cupertino, and they're graduates of our schools, and both are teachers today. As a teacher, my education standards are very high for our schools, and I will continue the work of the current city council in being an active partner with our schools to keep them the best. One of my top priorities is to bring stores back to Cupertino to life and our retail to thrive, so that we can shop and buy everything we need right here in Cupertino and keep our sales tax dollars to cover police and fire and city services right where we live. I'm tired of having to go to Santa Z to buy things. Please vote for me if you want a hard-working city council member. I'm running for Chris Wang's seat. Sorry. Thank you.
Thank you. Rod, your turn.
Hi, I'm Rod Sinks. I'd like to thank Apapa for hosting this event, and congratulations to C.C. Nguyen. Like you, my family and I love Cupertino for its great schools, great people of diverse cultures, and great open spaces. An effective council member brings a good head and a good heart to the job, as well as his passions or her passions. For me, those passions are education, economy, and environment. First, as a parent, I share your desire to prepare our kids for a world of great opportunity and great challenge. I've been an active school volunteer and booster, a YMCA father-daughter leader for a group of 300, a volunteer backpacking with the Girl Scouts and hiking with middle-class kids at Yosemite Institute, and a longtime scoutmaster to a troop of 130 scouts. The city can do more and must do more to actively support, collaborate with, and be an advocate for our schools to keep them strong. Second, having managed two startups from infancy to success, I know what it takes to create a vision, build consensus, and make it happen. We have a tremendous opportunity with Apple moving forward on its new world-class campus. How we choose to develop the surrounding area should come with no less vision, creating dynamic public and retail spaces for all of us to enjoy. We can also and must also attract the next wave of innovative companies to bring good jobs and economic benefits to the city. Third, I love the outdoors and am passionate about protecting the natural beauty of this area. Last year, with a number of concerned citizens, I founded a nonprofit called Bay Area for Clean Environment. Our first focus is the Lehigh Quarry and Cement Plant. Together with the State and Sierra Club, we now have positive momentum. As the closest community to the plant, Cupertino must also be a leader, working with neighboring cities to ensure that regulators do their jobs to protect our air, water, and land. Thank you.
Thank you, all the candidates. Now we proceed to the second portion is the question and answer. The first question is, with fast-growing Asian population in Cupertino, what can you do to get more recent immigrant family, talking about those who may not have the green card, let alone for the voting votes, those immigrant, involved and have their voice heard? We start with Gilbert.
Thank you very much, Xin. That's a really good question. So we have a lot of residents in Cupertino who are not U.S. citizens, as Xin mentioned in the questionnaire, who may be green card holders. And there's many opportunities to get involved. One is that we have a great program called Leadership Cupertino. And in Leadership Cupertino, it means that there are other ways to get involved than getting onto an elected position or onto a commission. We have the wonderful Cupertino Rotary Club. We have the West Valley Community Service, which helps people in need where we have a food pantry. We also have the Northwest YMCA, which is a healthy alternative where there is many different programs, from the Model United Nation to exercise on how to be healthy. And also, there we have the Senior Center as well, too, where there's U.S. citizenship classes, where it's really important that if you're a U.S. green card holder, is that how can you become a U.S. citizen? And most rightly, that when you become a citizen, the most important thing is fully participate in the American way by becoming a voter and by voting for six important candidates here for two seats. Thank you very much.
Okay, Homer.
Well, just want to let you know that Fremont Union High School District, of which I've been serving for close to 20 years, has always been concerned about our immigrants. So we have adult school that helps them with the language and the different classes that can help them because without the language capability, they tend to kind of stay put and shy away from greater improvement. So this has been one of the, you know, big pluses. Secondly, just this time, I have to say, using my Cupertino Mandarin, which I learned in Cupertino, I convinced two people, immigrants, to register and to vote. Besides a personal type of commitment, we need to certainly do more. The Senior Center can certainly do that. But what I found, talking with so many of them, is that they want to be involved, and yet, there are constraints for them. And so the Fremont Union High School District, because I being on the board, has been committed to keep that program going. You know, a lot of other schools, because of budget cuts, have cut out this, you know, this so-called adult school. We have kept it going, and we made the programs available to help them, so I'm very proud of that.
Marty. Thank you. When Michael Chang was mayor, he established a number of programs to help new immigrants to Cupertino, including Leadership Cupertino and also the Five Cs. Those are very good programs, and they went a long way. And we can continue to do a lot more. So for example, we could, in fact, have a program where we have translation at city council meetings and perhaps even at Planning Commission hearings. As a Planning Commissioner, I've reached out to new residents to get them involved in the processes in Cupertino and also to participate in our government here by applying for positions on the various commissions. I've also helped residents in terms of interfacing with the city and making sure they understand how the city works and how to get things done. And I think that we can do more in terms of focusing our attention on exactly what their needs are, understanding what they are, and then developing programs to address them. Thank you.
Donna.
I belong to the Library Foundation, and we have funded many. The library is such a rich cultural place that people don't realize. One of our things that we funded was the Dragon Source Quicken Chinese Magazine online, and it's the second-most-used database in the whole county library system. We also funded the Silicon Valley Reads, and that, every year, we feature a different book. And one of them was "The Year of the Fog", another one was "Wisdom of the Last Farmer", "Harvesting Legacy", "Not a Genuine Black Man", and then "A Distant Land of My Father's". And these are multicultural ways of understanding all the different cultures. We also have funded the Plain Tree Health Information Center in our library, and it gives medical information and services individualized to specific needs, and it provides medical advice in several languages, including Mandarin. I also served in the consortium, the Five Cs, and way from the very beginning, and it was exciting to learn about. And I participated just recently in the Chinese news, KTSF, Channel 26, which featured multiculturalism. I didn't get to say what the name of it was.
Rod.
Well, like you, my family and I choose to live in this diverse community. My kids are enriched by their friendships with kids from many, many cultural backgrounds. During my college years, I spent two years studying abroad, and my wife is an immigrant. Half the tech entrepreneurs in this valley are also immigrants. In business, I've been all over the world, working in partnership with other companies to develop world-class products and market them. And you know, it's hard to start a business. We're thinking about jobs in this economy. But particularly in tech, you need every possible competitive edge. So you hire and promote those individuals who can best get the job done, regardless of their background. You also develop people through mentoring and continuing education. So I've done that. I've hired the best from all over the world. I've sponsored many, many H1B and green card applicants in situations where we couldn't find qualified talent otherwise, and learned to appreciate and honor our cultural differences. So on our public boards and commissions, we should encourage more candidates to step into the ring for consideration and identify those who can best get the job done. Ideally, the composition of these bodies should reflect the diversity of the communities they serve. And I've seen many of you who are articulate, thoughtful, and visionary community leaders, and I invite you to consider serving our government at any level, and I'll be there to support the best of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris.
Even if you can't vote, I want you to know you can still get involved by donating to my campaign. Well, that was a joke. We are actually not looking for any more donations. But there are many ways to get involved in Cupertino. And as a city council member, I would like to expand that possibilities. If you're a student, I would like to provide you with more opportunities to get involved by helping us direct the traffic at the tri-square. Well, you have to be old enough. Obviously, if you are just six-year-old, you can be out there directing traffic. But this is just an example of mutually beneficial relationship between the city and our citizens. If you're a senior citizen and you're a recent immigrant, I like to provide more multicultural activities at our senior center. A lot of immigrant senior citizens feel particularly lonely and separated from the society because they don't go to work. They speak very little English, and I like to help them out. And for those, really, there's a lot of ways you can get involved with our city. But I like to provide more multicultural activities in our Cupertino so that we can learn from each other. And when I say multicultural, I don't just mean Asian-American or Hispanics. This goes for European-Americans as well. We all need to learn from each other and learn the American way and make Cupertino a great place. Thank you.
Thank you. Actually, I should mention the last question, which is a good question, is asked by Xin Dao De Lei reporters Weiwei Ren and Derek Chang. The next question is asked by the World Journal reporter Daniel Cho. If elected, what can you do to promote business in the Cupertino Square Shopping Center, this Vaclav Shopping Center, in order to attract more consumers to shopping there? Homer.
All right. I think I've mentioned before that to have business going, we need to have so-called a critical mass, enough of the destinations and all that for people to go. So whether it's going to be our city center, whatever... to go. So whether it's going to be our city center, whatever, whatever we do, we need to, to keep, as Donna says, to shop in Cupertino, so we don't have to be running around all over the place. So that's certainly one important area, as I, you know, for me to see business. In other ways, again, I've said before that when we see business come and go, we need to understand why. Is it because of the high rents and all that? Do we need to have businesses that can survive, literally, in Cupertino? And one of the areas I, like I mentioned before also, so I don't mind repeating, is that to, for the businesses to be engaged with the, with our population, including schools, so that they can have, you know, weather discounts, more patronage, and this you can kind of snowball effect to keep things going. Then, of course, other, other areas, in terms of selection of businesses, I think we also need to, to, you know, in terms of planning and what kind of businesses, we also need to give it more thought as well.
Marty.
Thank you. With Valco and with other commercial properties, the city can be more proactive in working with the property owners to revitalize their properties. The city can also do more to market itself and attract high-quality retail businesses and high-tech businesses to the city. I believe the city has some leverage in tackling this job, such as providing temporary reduction in sales tax fees to entice new businesses that we'd like to locate here to do so. I want Cupertino to become more business-friendly, and there are many ways to do that. Being more efficient and less costly in approving permits for retail uses of existing buildings is an example. I've heard stories of prospective business owners giving up on Cupertino and going to Sunnyvale because of the time and difficulty to get a permit to do business here. That's a problem that we need to fix. Besides Valco, Main Street is also a very important project, which will provide a downtown, our first here in Cupertino, surrounded by retail, restaurants, a hotel, a park, senior housing, and office space. This project can be synergistic with Valco. The general rule in retailing is that the more retail is concentrated in one area, the more successful that retail is. We only need to look to Valley Fair and Santana Road to see how true that is, and I hope to make that a reality in Cupertino as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Donna.
I'm also very excited about Main Street Cupertino and the downtownish project slated for the 17 acres between Finch and Tantow, from Stevens Creek to Valco Parkway. The town square, cobblestone streets, and the new four-star hotel and the bandstand will be a great place to meet and stroll and gather. And its close proximity to the Rose Bowl, mixed-use project, and the Metropolitan will be fantastic. The many new stores will be a great place to shop and bring sales tax. I think that we need to seek retail, offer some incentives, and streamline the permitting process. We must be a can-do city and make our, attract the retail. I see revitalization in the old Mervyn's Plaza or the, and the old PW site, and that's exciting. And Panera's and BJ's and Fontana's and the marketplace are all booming. How and why are they doing it? Let's copy that.
Okay, Rock.
Well, Cupertino needs more retail and entertainment destinations, period. Picture in your mind those places you go to dine and shop with your family. Chances are they're very vibrant places that give you multiple good reasons for going there. And frankly, neighboring cities have done a better job at creating these kinds of destinations over the last decade. And it's easy for the city to approve projects with a heavy residential component, because residential development has proved the most lucrative for developers because our schools are so great. But these same projects put pressure on our schools, particularly our high schools, where the, the schools get no incremental money for each incremental student. Many past and present council members have been champions of good development and have told me what a challenge it is. But we do need some new vision on the council. Velagio could have been a wonderful place that was largely retail. Instead, we got residential. Valco could have been fixed. But instead, we have a mall that is, well, you can get a body piercing inside, I guess. So we need to do better than this, and we need some new voices on the council. Thank you.
Chris.
I've talked with our city manager, David Knapp, who told us that the ownership of Valco changed six times in the past 11 years. And I talked with Public Safety Commissioner Nguyen, who's, who agreed with me that we have a movie theater, we have bowling lanes, we have skating rink, we have great restaurants in Valco, but people are not going inside to shop. Why? And I think the reason is that the management has been seeing Valco as a flipping property, not as a long-term investment property, and they need to change their mentality. And what can we, the city, do to help this, help them succeed? We can provide them with temporary tax incentives for new tenants who are ready to move into Valco. We, we can make it easy for people to, I agree with Marty, to apply for permits with the city to either run the business or improve your home in Cupertino. And finally, perhaps we should change the format of Valco to make it more, more of a radical push to make it such as an outlet mall. I don't think we can ever have enough of those. Thank you.
Gibber.
Thank you very much. Valco is a rough gem that's ready to blossom here in Cupertino. When I was growing up here in Cupertino, it was the place to go. You had Bullocks, you had Gap, you had all the stores that we look at, at Valley Fair as well as Stanford Mall. But we have two large malls in Palo Alto and San Jose. So Valco's probably going to turn into a lifestyle center. The struggle that we have with the Valco Mall is that the owner's not ready to move forward. As I said earlier, it has gone through a couple of ownership, but we're very frustrated with, with the mall. Ways we can improve is that it is in a redevelopment agency. The state took away the RDA, and we implemented it back. And ways that we can improve the mall is definitely support the three anchors, which is Manny Sears, Macy's, and JCPenney. We have a brand-new movie theater that's been there for a few years, the AMC Theaters, which is the top three movie theaters in the nine counties. And there's wonderful restaurants like Alan Joe's Steak House, TGIF, and Benny Hahn's. We just have to wait and be patient about it. It's all market-driven, and there is an opportunity to build this mall to something that Cupertinoans would be very proud and with the owners of the Valco, which was named after Cupertino. Just want to say very shortly that if you look at our city council meetings, especially this year, we have run it very efficiently and very seldom go over midnight. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. The third question is applied by Cupertino Chamber of Commerce. Looks like just a follow-up question for the previous one. We are all thrilled about Apple campus coming in. So in addition to this development, what specific measures would you support or lead to encourage new retail and business development in Cupertino? This one, I think we start with Marty.
Okay. Well, actually, some of my comments from the last question apply here in terms of, I think it's very important that we be more business-friendly and do everything we can to show the business community that this is the place to, to locate and be. And some of the ways to do that, as we've mentioned before, is to improve the permitting process. Another way is to go out and actively seek and recruit new businesses to come to Cupertino. We can work with property owners jointly to go out and make joint presentations to show that both the property owners and, and the city are arm-in-arm and want their business to come here and, and show them what a good market this is. So I think by working together with the property owners, like Valco, like the developers that will, will do our first downtown area, that we can make a difference. We've already made a difference in terms of the new grocery store, the new Safeway going in where P&amp;W used to be. We've got TJ Maxx moving in in the center of town, and a number of other possibilities that are on the books, and we just keep, we, we need to keep working at that. Thank you.
I'm really excited about the Apple's huge expansion. I would want to make sure that all the problems which will arise, like traffic and infrastructure, and police and fire, and the schools and emergency services are dealt with. I participated in their first Apple presentation that they had here, and we met in groups and we brainstormed. And the biggest serious question was traffic and the closing of Prunridge. And we had some very creative ideas. One even thought of building a flyover to complete the Prunridge. I think that a lot of public hearings will ensue. I think we need to attract, they're going to want to stay and play here, 12,000 employees, and we need to provide some really creative things for them to do and to, places to eat and places to buy things and so, and services. Steve Jobs grew up here, and he, he chose this place because he loved Cupertino. And I'm really glad that I got to see him give that presentation, and I thank you.
Well, Cupertino is home, thankfully, to the most successful startup of all time, Apple. And I'm committed to helping plant the next wave of innovative companies. You know that I've been a high-tech leader, as I commented. I started in two companies at infancy and brought them to be $300 million businesses. One is a successful public company, the other we sold last fall to a public company. So I know tech, and I know business. And what I'd like to see come to Cupertino is a incubator. In Sunnyvale, there are 200 companies under one roof at the Plug and Play Tech Center in North Sunnyvale. I'd like to see that organization or one like it come here and plant that seed of those companies that five years from now will be providing a more diverse revenue to the city, both in terms of taxes and in terms of the good jobs that good people can, can have here in this town. You know that our economy has been challenging for the last decade, and the council needs business leaders like me, who have built companies and understand the problems of managing here, who have built companies that employ thousands of people now. So I think this is an important skill to bring. We have a lot of folks with real estate, real estate investment background, and we need consensus builders and people with a business head from having managed teams and managed large budgets. On the other point, I was talking about the vision of retail and creating a wonderful, large retail space. Think of the opportunity posed by Apple coming in and how we attract those folks to enjoy shopping and dining as well as Cupertinoans. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris.
I, like all Cupertinoans, I'm very excited to have Apple in our town, and also very excited to see their new campus being here in Cupertino. I think it's important that we attract other businesses who actually generate retail tax revenue into our city because the new Apple campus is bordered by Sunnyvale to the north, Santa Clara to the east, and San Jose to the south. So how do we make sure that these support retail services come to our city instead of the other places? We need to make Cupertino a business-friendly place. And also, we can study other high-tech companies in Cupertino, not in Cupertino, I'm sorry, in, in the Bay Area, to see why the retail business around these other campuses fail or succeed. There are other high-tech companies that have booming retail services around it. There are, there are that don't. And I think we can study them and learn their lessons so that we, we can have a long-term vision. And secondly, we, we need to make sure that traffic is controlled at a minimum. Nobody is going to shop or dine here if they have to sit in traffic for 10 minutes or have to look for a parking spot. Thank you.
Gibber.
What a great delight to have Mr. Jobs come in the June council meeting to announce that he's going to expand his Apple headquarters here in Cupertino. As Apple being our number one sales-producing revenue here in the city Cupertino, we want to work together with Apple. It was going to go through a large environmental process and through the planning commission. And the most important thing is you can have all the technical background as a businessperson, but we're talking about land use. Land use, that is very valuable. That Marty Miller's been on the planning commission for nine years. I've been on the planning commission for five and a half years and four years on the city council, because we have to look at the land use and how it's going to affect the residents of Cupertino. You have 12,000 employees who will be coming in at various different times, and the number one concern that was spoken up at the scoping session for the hour is traffic. We don't want our residents to be inconvenienced at Lawrence Expressway of Wolf Road. How do we mitigate it? How do we work with our neighbors in Sunnyvale and Santa Clara with the single-family residents with Prunridge being closed? I believe that there's many opportunities to mitigate those factors, but you want to have good land use experience to deal with those, those situations that can be overcome. Furthermore, there's an opportunity to bring other companies that, like Seagate, that's already in our town, and other companies that do business with Apple, so that we can be diversified as well, too. Thank you.
Homer.
Thank you. Again, you know, everybody, everyone is excited about Apple, but I want to remind everybody why Steve Jobs, you know, like Apple. He was a graduate and with Steve Wolzniak of Homestead High School, the, the district that right now I am the, on the board for and have been cultivating this type of relationship. So having said that, it's obvious that with the schedule of the 12,000 or 13,000, I was told that it'll be kind of starting in stages. It's not 12,000 right away. That, this means that give us some time to really plan through what we need to do with some of the buildings that may be available and so on, to attract the other high-tech companies to Cupertino. Besides all the other processes and all that, we have a great, actually, a great labor force, if you will, labor that right in Cupertino with all the high-tech folks, so that having more of the high-tech and give us the synergy to really move ahead is what we must and should do. All right? So talking about all the traffic problems, a lot of folks live in Cupertino already. That would be also a great plus. Yes, we have to deal with specific situations like Prunridge and all that, but I think the whole picture, give us an opportunity to build up the retail and all that to also service the employees as well.
Thank you. Our Papa has spent time talking to residents, so they collect some of the questions which represent some of the urgent concern. One of them is, the first question is, school traffic issue has not been solved over 10 years. Both school district and city could not solve its satisfactory. And if you are elected, any effective measurement can be adopted to get it straight around the school, no more jam during peak school hours. This, we start with Donna.
With me?
Yeah.
I've, I've talked to many citizens, and this seems to be a real common issue. They're very concerned about the traffic around the schools. And I know they've had flex time where the different schools have started, especially where there's been three. So the elementary will start at one time, and the junior high and the high schools. I know the city has been involved with crossing guards to help with the situation. And the, our sheriff's department, I think, does do some patrolling. But I think there could be a lot more education done, maybe with the parents, somehow, carpooling, vanpooling, something that we need to do differently, because it's a nightmare going down McClellan past Montevista and the grammar school there. And so I think we have to be creative about that. And that is one of the things I would like to work with. like to work with, and that would be with the school district and the city. So I thank you.
Thank you. Ron?
Well, I sat down nearly two months ago and spoke with Polly Bovey and two of her department heads about this specific issue, and I wanted to understand from her perspective why, in fact, it has taken 10 years, and in fact, longer. We've had this problem for a long time. She explained to me that the city had gotten together with the school districts some 10 years ago, and nothing had happened, because nobody wanted to spend a half a sheriff's deputy worth of salary to fix the problem. The school district wasn't willing, the city wasn't willing. I don't get it, frankly. I don't know why it took so long. Finally, a year ago, a pilot program was established, and each side kicked in half. This is exactly the kind of thing, what I mean when I say, the city needs to actually support the schools and serve our residents better. To me, the city should have, 10 years ago, taken the step to simply say, okay, we've got this covered. We know schools are hurting right now, we know that we want to have teachers in the classroom, so this is exactly what ought to be done. We also need to do some other things with our schools. We don't have a regular forum for communication today between school boards and the council on issues of mutual interest. We don't have growth policies today that avoid overcrowding of our schools, and schools are not regularly consulted as part of our approval process for substantial residential development. I would fix these problems. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris?
We have three schools, I'm talking about the tri-school areas, we have three schools in virtually one block, and that's a nightmare to start with. And nowadays, there are more and more parents who rather sit in traffic for half an hour to drive their kids to school, instead of letting their kids walk on bike to school. Why? And I think the reason is, there's so many other parents who are driving their kids to school, that they feel that they have to drive their kids to school, otherwise their kids may be in danger of being hit by a car. And so, I think we can break out of the bad cycle. We can make it easier and safer for kids to walk and back to school. And I like to provide, work with the school board to provide school buses for the kids. I know they have budget problems, but many parents are willing to pay for the service. So why not bring back buses on a fee basis? And we can have more people to help direct the traffic, not just the sheriffs, but also perhaps we could use student volunteers as, like, safety patrols. Like I mentioned before, this is one of the ways our kids can get involved with our community. But finally, I think the most important thing for the city council to do is to listen to the people's suggestions. We have very smart people, very highly educated people living in Cupertino, that have great suggestions, but these suggestions are not getting to the city council. On the city council, I like to make it easy for people to make suggestions to the government. Thank you.
Gilbert?
Thank you very much. Citizens move to Cupertino because of our public schools. When you talk to people in Taiwan, you talk to people in India, they know that Cupertino because of our public education, and not only Apple as well, too. The best way to solve the school traffic problem is try to get the folks out of the cars and get them to walk to school. One of the things that the team commission has been working is called BaoWao, Bike One Week, Walk One Week. We want to change behavior to encourage children to walk to school. The city council has increased the school crossing guards, but most important is that, yes, there has been a concern regarding an increase of housing, and when I was on the planning commission, when there was a huge growth, I requested both the Cupertino School District and the Fremont Union High School District to have representatives here to let us know that, is there a concern or not? So I strongly urge to check the facts, that the city staff, and the council, and the planning commission does care to have a quality of life here in Cupertino.
Homer?
Thank you. Since I'm the school board, I'm very aware of traffic problems, you know, people talk about it as though it's like weather, you know? It changes and all that, and nothing gets done. Yes, we finally got something done, so calming the traffic a little bit, but it's a problem that gets to the root of what our city government is all about. We need to have closer contact and communication with the school districts. When there are issues and problems of similar interest, we need to get to it right away, not 10 years. And talking about development, we still are not really, really talking that much, you know, when it's mentioned that we talk a little bit, but again, you know, what was the result? We need to have a comprehensive plan to really work this out, because otherwise, we'll be talking about traffic again 10 years from now. I don't think the citizens of this community is willing to wait for this type of inaction. All right? So, what is it all about? Then, we need to, yes, get the community's input, but we need to get our heads together and, you know, with the problem-solving mode that we really need badly.
Markie?
Thank you. This is more than just a traffic issue, it's also a safety issue. Because just think about it, the roads are crowded, are clogged, the cars are not moving, and they're also clogged in the neighborhoods. And if someone, God forbid, had an emergency, would an emergency vehicle be able to get to them on time? So I see this as more than just traffic that needs to be solved. It's a very serious issue, it's a potentially an accident waiting to happen. I also would say that Mayor Gilbert Wong and Vice Mayor Mark Santoro, over the last couple of years, have been working hard at trying to solve this issue. And when I spoke to the sheriff's office, they, in fact, have said that they've noticed some improvement. It's not as much improvement as we like, but it's not as worse as it's been. So, the city council has been working on it. In terms of where we should go from here, I think the first and foremost thing we should do is get all the stakeholders in the same room. We need to have the schools represented, the school administration, the city council, and the residents. And we all sit down, and we close the doors, and we don't leave until we come with a solution. This is a queuing theory problem, and we have a lot of smart engineers here in town, and we should be able to solve it. I mean, just basically, if we had drop-off points, and then perhaps walking buses from the drop-off points, or maybe if we can afford a bus or two, we could reduce the traffic at the school sites and fix the problem. Thank you.
I think due to the time, and so many audience have the questions, I wish we can confine the answer in one minute, instead of one and a half minute, so I can ask more questions. The first question is talking about the campaign contribution. Would you rescue yourself from the voting or any items before city council if involved someone had donated a large contribution to your campaign? So this one, we start with Ron.
Sure.
Yeah, absolutely. You know, in politics, we all need money to get our messages out, and that's particularly true for a newcomer like me. And at the end of September's reporting period, my competitors reported year-to-date contributions of 100 to 5, excuse me, $10,000 to $50,000. I came in at the low end, and I had a bunch of individual contributors. In contrast, we have people here, including Gilbert, Marty, and Donna, who have taken money from real estate interests of at least $5,000. So, you know, if we look at Peter Powell, who's before us with Changes on Main Street, I think that, I question whether a council member can frankly be completely objective when they take such amounts from those who have business before the city. Now, if somebody wants to claim I'm funded by the special interest of individuals who care about our environment, as I've read in the news, so be it. The entire community benefits from this, and I, as an individual, derive no more economic benefit than any other resident. Thank you.
Chris?
I am proud to say that I have run a very clean campaign, and as all of you probably know, that we have received no contributions from big interests in Cupertino or outside of Cupertino. And that's what I plan to do on the city council. You can tell a lot about how candidate is going to do on the city council by looking at how he or she runs his or her campaign. And on the city council, if there's anything that's of conflicts of interest to me, yes, absolutely, I will sit out from the decision. This is a legal principle as well, and as a lawyer, I'm aware of that, so I will adhere to that very strictly. But most importantly, I don't think sitting out is enough, because there are a lot of times where you scratch my back, I will scratch yours. So we need to keep that out of our city politics. When I will sit out, when there's also a conflict of interest for any of people that I know that I may be able to help out with, or if they are able to help me out on some other issue. Thank you.
Gilbert?
Thank you very much. Yes, I have received contributions from developer, and I just want to make it very clear is that we have a very clear and transparent policy from the FPPC. All amounts that I receive or any candidates up here is all reported and is all legal. That mean that you were able to vote if you were to be on the city council. Again, if you look at my track record on the planning commission and on the city council, I have been an independent voice. I have listened to all sides, including the Cupertino concerns citizens, as well as the cares. We want to have a strong balance between different groups, and it's not easy, sitting on the city council, to make those tough decisions. We have seen Vice Mayor Santoro, who ran a campaign that's under 5,000. So it's truly, right now, these last two weeks, is look at all the candidates, look at their websites, and please vote based on who you think is most qualified. Thank you.
Homer?
In the Fremont Union High School District, we adhered to a very strong policy that whenever there's even a hint of conflict of interest, that the board member would not vote. When I, if I should be on the city council, I would insist on that as well, because if somebody contributes to me, let's say $5,000, and then has a project ongoing in very much the same kind of timeframe, even though we say we don't, you know, have any bias or whatever, the fact remains that this, the contribution itself smack of conflict of interest, and we need to deal with it, rather than to just say that it's reported. What is reported is just the amount. What is the spirit of what we do, it's, the important part is trans, not only transparency, but really taking the interests of our whole city and the residents as a whole, and not answering to any specific group, especially when something is coming up and with a big contribution hanging over the head. So I'm 100% on making clear, no, you know, there should be no conflict of interest.
Markie? In the September reporting, I had the lowest campaign contribution total of any of the candidates at $10,000. 5,000 was from a Sunnyvale property owner, 4,100 was my own money, and I donated that because I feel strongly about Cupertino, and my personal desire to contribute to the city, and I think it's important enough to spend my own money on a campaign. And the rest of the contributions were smaller, and since then, I've had lots more contributions, a lot of them small ones. I have, just as Mayor Wong mentioned, I have represented everyone fairly as a member of the planning commission, and whenever there was a hint of conflict of interest, I would recuse myself in the past and will continue to do so in the future, and my track record will bear that out. Thank you.
Donna?
And I can assure you, I'm honest, I follow all the FPC, PPC rules, and I've run an honest, clean campaign. I'm a retired teacher on a fixed income, I'm not a wealthy candidate like Mr. Sykes, and I've taken donations from a friend who is not a developer. I will let this pass, and I will not dwell on his lack of public service, except for being a scout and a YMCA leader, which I, and most women, do while we're working full-time and along with being a wife and a mom. I think his attack is meant to be a distraction for what he still needs to learn and do about Cupertino.
Thank you. The next question is dealing with diversity culture. What have you done in your business or civic life that demonstrates your inclusion of people of all culture and backgrounds based on merit? I think we start with Chris.
I need to say, I have, I know the issues facing immigrants, and I knew, I know the importance of having diversity. When I trained with the U.S. Marine Corps, when I went to school in Virginia, it made very clear to me that having diversity is a good thing, no matter where you are. And when I talk about diversity, again, I'm not just talking about Asian-Americans or other minority groups, but also, we should also include mainstream populations. And I have worked in the Third Street Community Center, working for Hispanic immigrants. I have volunteered with CIRT, working with different members of our community. And I have also been an open advocate of giving a fair chance to Asian students a admissions process in state universities and private universities. And on the city council, I would like to exert my influence on that issue as well. Thank you.
Gilbert?
In Cupertino, we truly embrace our cultural diversity. First, I've been a strong advocate with the Asian-American Business Council, where we have Vicky Tsai and Catherine Chen, who champions bilingual business seminars to get small business owners to be active here in Cupertino. Secondly, in the Indo-American community, I have been a huge advocate in supporting Mahesh Nihalani and the Cupertino Chamber of Commerce to have a Diwali festival, to introduce the festival lights to our community. And lastly, our sister city program has been very strong, and we just recently introduced a new sister city, Bunnu Bushwar, Orissa, and we're also trying to create another one. And lastly, how can we best bring our children together? And we worked together with the California Cricket Academy to introduce cricket to the citizens here in Cupertino, and it was instrumental in getting a cricket pitch, a women and children's cricket pitch in Library Field. Every Saturday and Sunday, you see young Indo-Americans playing with other non-Indo-American kids together, living together in one community. Thank you.
From way back, 70s and 80s, I was involved in language schools. The Chinese Language School, West Valley, was actually involved with teaching and being principal. When the Korean School, Language School need a home, when I was on Fremont Union, and when I was and is on the Fremont Union High School District, I made available Cupertino High School for them to call their school home. I was involved in the Five Seas, as was mentioned, very involved member, City of Cupertino Cross-Cultural Commission. At the ANZA, I face students from every corner of the world, and I encourage them, every time, without, you know, worrying about where they come from, to do their best, because this Silicon Valley is a meritocracy, and believes in treating everybody right, all we need to do is to have them do the best they can.
Markie?
Thank you. During my years on the planning commission, I've helped many new residents for whom English is a second language to get involved in the city, to, I've helped them to get their permits approved for remodeling of their houses, or perhaps even building a new house where an old house once stood. I have worked with organizations such as churches in the communities to help integrate new residents, and to help them with their needs for expansion. And I have also worked with, to bring candidates of other cultures into the city structure itself, on the planning commission, as well as other commissions. Thank you.
As a teacher, I've taught bilingual classes, multicultural classes, it's just part of the program. And I also have been involved with the Lunar New Year Fall Fest- And I also have been involved with the Lunar New Year Fall Festival, Ghandi Day, Diwali, so many of our celebrations, that we celebrate our culture. And it's like when I was growing up, we had our Portuguese celebrations, parades, dances, food, and it just feels like home in Cupertino with all of these celebrations of the culture. And I've certainly contributed and worked for some of the special things that the Library Foundation has done to provide the library with things for people to bilingual education and programs.
Thank you.
Well, I'd like to go back to the last question for a minute. I'd like to say that ten thousand dollars or five thousand dollars, in the case of the two colleagues next to me, is an awful lot of money to get from a friend, or a property manager, or an investor in real estate here in Cupertino. So look it up for yourself, it's all online. Now, with regard to diversity, I talked before about H1B and green card visas. I have sponsored hundreds of people from all over the world, and frankly, primarily Asia, because that's where great universities in our world are creating great engineers. I've sponsored literally hundreds of them to work here and be part of our economy. And frankly, it's essential. We pick the best people. In my scout troop, last year, we had fourteen Eagle Scouts, fourteen. So that's an awful big number. There are a hundred thirty boys in the troop. More than half of them were Asians, so we have a very diverse troop, and I'm delighted to work with these youth of all backgrounds. Thank you.
The last question is, recently, many residents raised concern about Lehigh accountability on the environment. What is your view and your plan? This will start with Gilbert.
As I walk around the neighborhoods since July, one of the concerns that was raised is the Lehigh cement plant. The most important thing about Lehigh is that we need to make sure that they comply. As we know, the jurisdiction of Lehigh is in Santa Clara County, as well as the State Mining Board. We need to make sure that the Bay Area Quality Management, the Environmental Protection Agency at the federal level monitors and maintain and make sure that they comply. If they do not comply, I think the City Council needs to come down very hard. Thank you.
Homer.
Okay. I have right here in front of me the brochure, the sample ballot, and I want to say that I was the one way back, talking about July or August, to feel that the Lehigh issue is a very important issue because it affects our residents, and we need to respond to them. Rod Sinks also felt the same way. Now, as I, as the campaign goes on, and I have this around, I don't, I did not see any one of, one of the others, I hate to say this, that, you know, really make that as a concern, at least at the, when we wrote the ballot. And now, all of a sudden, everybody says they're concerned about this and that. What I'm saying is that, look, you know, if you are really concerned about that issue, let's really do something about it, because the last year or so, the City Council really hasn't done too much. So let's face the facts, and if my, you know, City Council people admit that that's the case, I would feel much better. But the fact remains is, there's lots needs to be done.
Thank you. Marty.
Thank you. Ensuring the health and safety of our residents is a top priority of city government. Protecting our residents from industrial pollution is a basic government responsibility. Government is the only effective entity for dealing with problems of air and groundwater contamination. If Lehigh is polluting the air and contaminating the groundwater, we should not rest until they stop. They must comply with all EPA, state, and county regulations, and that should be the only topic of discussion with them until they do so. However, they're, they're, they are not the only health and safety issues that the city is responsible for protecting us from. We have had recent shooting tragedy, we've also had a gas leak and explosion, and there have been everyday occurrences of robbery. And of course, living in California means you always must be prepared for the next earthquake. Cupertino's emergency response workers have acted admirably in the recent events, and we must continue to provide them with the resources necessary for them to protect us in the future. Thank you.
Lehigh is in Santa Clara County's jurisdiction, and it is in our sphere of influence. So we should expect the highest standards of air and water quality. And I will work with all the agencies that monitor Lehigh. Santa Clara County Board of Supervisors, the Bay Area Quality Management, the U.S. Environmental Protection, the U.S. Mine Safety and Health, Santa Clara Water Valley, Santa Clara Valley Water District, all of those companies. And they are in charge of them, and I will work with them, and I would hold Lehigh to the highest standards.
Thank you.
A lot of talk here tonight about this. The quarry and cement plant were here before most of us. Like any business, they have a right to operate if they observe applicable laws and regulations. Now, the city derives no tax benefit because Lehigh is outside the city border, but pollution knows no such bounds. There are ongoing violations that need to be addressed. It's not if, it's that they exist. It's why I got together with a handful of residents last year to found base, and we've made good progress in the last year. The EPA has new air regulations to take effect in 2013. The Sierra Club has action pending on selenium pollution of our water. Base has taken action to preserve the published right to be heard, and the state has weighed in on years of operation without an approved reclamation plan. What's left? We need a council, unlike the one who was here in these chambers last December, who will take a stand in the interest of Cupertino residents, listen, and do what Los Altos and Los Altos Hills have done. Thank you.
Chris.
I received an email from a resident just a couple days ago, asking if we can, whether I support shutting down the cement plant or expand, whether I support expanding the plant. And my answer is, you know, I don't think both, I don't support expanding them, but is it realistic for me to promise that we are able to shut down a plant that's outside of our jurisdiction, that's been there before Cupertino became a city? No, it's not realistic for me to make that promise. I wish I could. Would I be happy if they were gone? Yes, absolutely. But we need to work with the reality, and the reality is, we need to work with the other levels of government that have direct jurisdiction over the plant to make sure that they're in a hundred percent compliance. And if they're not, we'll hold them accountable. And one more thing, their trucks go through our city. It makes a lot of noise, leaves a trail of dust, and that's something we can directly regulate, and that's something I will do. Thank you.
Now, we go to the third portion of this form. So this closing statement, this time we start from Rod. This one and a half minute.
One and a half, thank you. Former Mayor Richard Lowenthal says this, "I'm endorsing Rod Sinks because he brings new energy to the council. He listens well, and I'm convinced he'll improve the business climate and the quality of life for families in our city." Current council member and former mayor, Orin Mahoney, writes this, "I have spoken to all the candidates running, and I believe that Rod is the best choice to serve the citizens of Cupertino. My support for schools and our youth has won me the enthusiastic endorsement of our high school district superintendent Polly Bovee and board members Hung Wei, Bill Wilson, and Homer Tong, as well as the CEA, who represent the teachers and other staff at CUSD. I am the only candidate here endorsed by both the Sierra Club and the California League of Conservation Voters. Every person in this city has interests, and our government was founded on the idea that everyone's voice should be heard. My approach is to reach out and listen to good ideas from every corner. In office, I will be accessible to all, working to understand diverse views, and then seeking common ground on which to build a consensus. That's what I've done my whole business life. When it comes time to vote, you can be certain I will put residents' interests first. So if you share my view that Cupertino needs new energy and vision, please vote for me, Rod Sinks." Learn more at rod sinks dot com. Check out my public page on Facebook. I'm number two on the ballot. Thank you very much.
Okay, we reverse order. Donna, your turn.
Hi. I'm, I've taught business leaders. I'm honest, and you can depend on me. If I've received a gift, there is no string attached. My interest is only in the city of Cupertino. My goals are to encourage and promote retail in the city so that citizens can buy everything that they need right here. I was endorsed by the Cupertino Chamber of Commerce, and I was endorsed by the San Jose Mercury News. That was pretty special to me. I really want to preserve history along Stevens Creek Trail, and restore the creek, complete the trail, and promote this legacy farm with, in conjunction with the high school, so that they can really do planting and farming and have that experience. I want to see that trail continue on up to the Linda Vista Park area. I want to continue green policies in the city and protect the hillsides. Vote for me, Donna Austin, and it's donna4, the number four, cupertino.com.
Thank you. Marty.
Thank you. During my years on the Planning Commission, I've helped many new residents for whom English is a second language get home remodeling applications approved by the city. I've supported the Chinese church on Bub Road, get an approval to expand their activities in the building next door, and I helped a second Chinese church locate on Bentley Drive. I've helped Asian residents of Randy Lane and Larry Way reach compromise with their neighbors over property rights. I've helped multicultural candidates for both public and appointed office get elected and appointed, respectively, because I believe in inclusiveness and that it's important for all groups to have representation in our government. Everyone up here has made promises tonight, but while others only make promises, only Gilbert and I have actually done something as city representatives to help the Asian community, as well as the city in general, in terms of improvements. I hope you believe, as I do, that positive actions count more than promises. My candidacy is supported by State Senator Joe Semidion, Santa Clara County Supervisor Liz Ness, and many leaders of the Chinese community, including State Assembly Member Paul Fong, Mayor Gilbert Wong, thank you Gilbert, former mayor and current county school board member Michael Chang, former mayor Patrick Kwak, Campbell Council Member Evan Lo, and Sunnyvale Council Member Otto Lee. Please join them and vote for me, Marty Miller, number six, on November eighth. Thank you.
Homer.
Okay. I have to say, I strongly object to say only two of you have worked for the Asian community. I have done the most compared to the two of you combined, all right? So don't, please don't spread things that's not true. Okay. The most important thing is that I've been elected five times, it's twenty years, by my community here, all right? That put me into the school board, and our school board, and the district specifically. It's ranked fifth, excuse me, ranked third in the whole state of California. That means I must have been doing something right. What's important is when somebody says people are talking. I've done this, you know, all the volunteer and also elective office work for nineteen years. Like I said, that is more than all five of you combined. So let's not talk about things just verbiage, let's talk about the facts, all right? More importantly, having said all that, because you really, you know, get to me when you make statements like that, is that what is important really is a person's integrity, okay? Honesty really shown by what you do, not by what you say. And I stand on my record of nineteen years for people to look at what I have done for the community, all right? And I want to have that actually sense of building us together as a group to make our city better, rather than making statements that's not supported and is not true. Thank you.
Gilbert.
First, I want to say thank you very much for Apapa to hosting this candidates forum tonight, for CCE and Sinkhome, the founders of Apapa. My wife Helen and I are very proud to live here in Cupertino, to raise our two young children, who's a second grader and seventh grader, who's attending Cupertino Union School District. First, I want to say that I've been humbled and honored to serve on the City Council for four years, and I'd like to ask the voters of Cupertino to reelect me for another four years. Why? I want to continue to keep Cupertino solvent, to make sure that Apple is successful and to have a strong economic retail base. Second, I want to make sure the level of services in our city remains strong, making sure our libraries open seven days a week while the city of San Jose is reducing their library hours. And lastly, keep our cultural diversity, celebrate our diversity, celebrate it through the Diwali Festival, celebrate it through the Moon Festival, celebrate it through the Happy Kids Day by introducing Taiwanese culture to our city. I also been supported by the Sierra Club, the San Jose Mercury News, the Superintendent Phil Kwan of the Cupertino School District, Polly Bovee from the Fremont Union High School District, and the Chancellor Linda Thor at the Foothill Dianza Community College. We need to work together collaboratively, and I humbly ask for your support for my reelection, Gilbert Wong. Thank you.
Chris.
There, thank you, Apapa, and thank you for watching and attending this. You guys are the reason democracy works in Cupertino. And tonight, there has been a lot of talks about who has done the most in the past, but we should look into the future. And we have a lot of the same goals for the future, reducing traffic, improving the schools, helping our business community. But how do we achieve these goals? What's the plan to get us there? I have detailed plans for achieving all the goals I've promised you. I'm not politician, I'm no politician material, so you can see that, but I really want to do what's best for our community, and that's why I'm running. So please consider voting for me, Chris Jung. I'm number five on the ballot. Thank you.
This concludes today's forum. Thank you for your participation. Thank you for all the candidates. Let's give the candidate a round of applause. Thank you.